Morning, everybody. We can all say good morning, isn't it? Beautiful morning today. Lord's really blessed us with good weather. Today is March the 11th, 2025. It's about 9:02 AM. Regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners Court. Let the record show that Commissioner Clark is here. Commissioner Arthur and Commissioner Korbowski are here. Commissioner Whitmire has a doctor's appointment today. One of those deals. Funny thing about doctors, have y'all ever thought about this? You might have work yet to go do, but when they make an appointment, you gotta go when they say. Have you ever thought about that, instead of working around our schedule? But anyway, that's thoughts for an old guy on a Tuesday morning. All right, this meeting is called to order. And if you would please stand, I'll do the pledges. And Commissioner Clark's gonna lead us in the invocation. American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to our beautiful Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one one.
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this beauty today. We thank you for the folks who gathered here today to hear Commissioner's court speak. What we ask you is you guide all of us to make sound, wise decisions in the best interest of our citizens. In your most precious name we pray.
Amen. Thank you there, Commissioner. Appreciate you. Well, we do have some notices and proclamations today. The first one, of course, is Tri-County, our friends over at Tri-County Behavioral Group. And it, let's see, I think we have quite a few folks here, don't we? Everybody with Tri-County, y'all stand up. There we go. All right, thank y'all. Thank y'all. Tell you what, I'll ease down and read this proclamation, and y'all can join me. How about that? Give everybody a chance to visit a minute.
Delanda?
She's not here.
She's not here today? Okay.
Delanda's not there?
Everybody else is up there. This is a proclamation to y'all.
Here's me, I'll become this way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am. How you doing? Thank you, my friend. Hey. How you doing, sir? How you doing?
Everything's good, man.
Good evening.
We have a larger crowd than last year.
I like it. Yeah. Y'all remember, the camera never blinks, okay? They take a picture, you know, nobody's gonna think, right? Okay. All right, this proclamation for, whereas the month of March is first recognized as developmental disabilities works. Our president, Lon Ray, that was back in 1987, to bring awareness to the challenges people with developmental disabilities face. And whereas in 2010, Congress passed Rosa's law, which changed the term mental retardation to intellectual developmental disability. And whereas intellectual disability, we'll call it ID, starts anytime before a child turns 18, is characterized by differences in both intellectual function or intelligence deficits and adaptive behaviors. And whereas developmental disabilities is a broader category of physical mental conditions inclusive of ID, which occur before age 22, and often presents lifelong challenges. And whereas Texas has more than a half a million adults and children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas intellectual developmental disabilities are identified as cerebral palsy, autism, spectrum disorder, Turner syndrome, Down syndrome, fragile X syndrome, and Fager's Williams syndrome. And whereas individuals with developmental disabilities should be treated with dignity, respect, and have the opportunity to realize their full potential in school, work, or at home. So now therefore, the Liberty County Commissioners Court are helping to raise awareness and understanding of intellectual developmental disabilities and do hereby proclaim that March 27, 2025, is Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Day. And we assign this proclamation to y'all and present this to you. And thank you so much for all you do, folks. It truly takes a lot of folks to get involved. And it, I know, even back in the days when Sheriff was JP, it was no longer JP, but he could call you that on occasions. But it, I know he was a pretty strong advocate along with everybody else that was involved in earlier days for Liberty County. But thank y'all for all you do. And for all your efforts. Go get my hand. Well, good deal. I'll get you pictures now. Big spot, everybody big spot. Thank you, buddy. You're not, you're not good, I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Bitch. Thank you. We'll get this signed and get this to you. Yeah, what? Oh. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Y'all just stick around just a little bit. Back down the ladder. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Get you a sign. It's just like, where did that put's last?
That's it.
Is it 2020 or 2025, 25?
2020.
Have one more. Proclamation for American Red Cross Month, 2025. Are you the Red Cross?
Right.
Come on, man.
I got mud on my tire.
Oh, that's a.
And really, I live on Daisy Cheryl Road, so.
I believe you can take beer and mud here a little while.
I fell off a ladder, got it both different places. I was naked. Put a brick under one of them. Way.
This is proclamation for American Red Cross Month, 2025. Whereas during American Red Cross Month of March, we're celebrating the humanitarian spirit of Liberty County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another, that's in the heart of our community, exemplified by the people of Liberty County, Texas, through simple acts of kindness. Through the Red Cross providing health and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Claire Martin, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate people's suffering. Whereas every day these ordinary individuals sit up in hand to make a extraordinary difference for neighbors and neighbors whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by wildfires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service using vital skills like first aid and CPR. Young brothers survive medical emergencies or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting local and secondary bankruptcies around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Claire Martin's noble work. You must everything and anything you set to be and have to be. And ask everyone to join in this commitment. So by virtue of the authority vested in the laws of Liberty County, I do proclaim March 25th as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Liberty County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission that is assigned to them. Of course, it's for the entire month. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate you being here with us. Y'all just remember, whenever we have something kicking off in Liberty County, such as a good disaster, when we see several of them, more than seven, but Red Cross always there. They made some changes through the years to make sure that we don't forget as we did your, well, part. It's a cap, your party because parents gotta turn into an island.
Now, we were Cleveland, and Cleveland was an island. I was taking John's boat up and down 59 to, and over to the city 30105, I had a horse gone road and David loaded to that church and we couldn't get supplies here. Because there was no roads, all the rivers and stuff.
Well, we learned a good lesson. We did, y'all did have a location out in Luck.
Yes, we did.
Supply warehouse there.
Yeah, and in spring.
Yeah, in spring. 146 for some reason doesn't flood, so.
Do you place a move to, yes?
Yeah. Think about it. Anyway, that was one of the things I'm getting here.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next item up is public comment. And I have one person so far signed up. Albert Myers, Albert, if you would please come up and visit with us. Let me explain how this works. You know, traditionally, you get three minutes. If you need a little bit more, that's okay. We'll help you out with that. But we can't answer you back, okay? This is, this is all yours, okay? So. Well, as long as we can get.
All right.
Yeah, you can turn to the stage to crowd if you'd like.
Okay. All right, well, I move both ways.
I understand, yeah.
Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak here again this morning. I spoke here about a month and a half ago, basically on the same subject I'm gonna speak this morning. But when you follow two proclamations like you've given this morning to a group of folks, you sort of, you know, it sort of make you think about the challenge that you get ready to talk about. It's not nowhere near what they're dealing with. But, but this morning, I want to bring back to your attention again about a development that's taking place in Raywood, Texas, north of the railroad track and manufacturing plant. And this, again, this is suggested according to others, everyone here, that this is not an anti-business, anti-development. But it is definitely a scenario when you, I am anti-not-knowing. And I think I speak on behalf of everybody in the community around us that when you have someone come in, purchase six M800 acres, and all of a sudden decide that they're getting ready to build something that will be foreign to the community, especially when you use the term plant, manufacturing plant, anything plant, you gotta worry about water control, drainage, you gotta worry about what's being emitted into the air, you gotta worry about traffic. And there's also a scenario that's involved here where it's being suggested that there may be a rail spur that may be built along with this development. And I think any type of development like that, I think is in the best interest of the community, especially those that will live anywhere from, this is not a universal something as it relates to plants, but they always say you want to live about a mile, a mile and a half away from a plant if there's any type of minutes into the air. And if you're downstream, depends on which way wind's blowing. That can even go up to five miles in terms of what carries through the air. So I come to the court again, suggesting and hoping that everybody will take a look at this. And at a minimum, I think we should tell the community what is taking place with this plant. That's the only thing I think people would want, is to understand what's going on around them, what's being developed, not only for their living conditions, but their health and everything else associated with that. And I think that'd be in the best interest of the community. And that's why I'm here again to speak not only on behalf of my wife and I, but the community as a whole, that it'd be good to share information of what's taking place, of what's being developed, so people can make their own decision about what's taking place in the community. So again, I thank you for allowing me to speak here this morning.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Appreciate you being here. Okay. Moving right along, item six is to declare conflicts of interest. Does anyone on the Commissioners Court have a reason to declare a conflict of interest? They already item on the agenda. Okay. Moving right along again, number seven is consent agenda. Dwyane, I think you had one add-on. Is that correct?
It's in fire marshal budget, transferring $73,000 out of volunteer fire problems budget to fire marshals.
Kim, you have anything?
I don't.
Yeah? All right.
Along with the additions, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
You got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg, with the addition. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the regular agenda, the first one up is information presentation only. So there'll be no vote on this, but we could just, we would probably take a vote to take no action. From Piney Woods, CCS project, it's a carbon capture project. And it's an impact study, economic impact study with updates on project since the last time they came into court and visited with us back in January of 2024. So it's been a little over a year since you came by. And I understand y'all have some slides, maybe, that we can look at?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if y'all would, ease up. You got a microphone there. And tell us who you are, who you represent. So over in the county clerk's office, when they take these great notes, they can get your name right, okay?
Okay, I am Julie Cudney with Pure Fox Communications. I am Jesse Frumman's partner with Tanaska. So just a supporter here.
Nice to see y'all. We're gonna hand out a few things, so you have it.
Thank you.
Probably won't do the screen. I don't think we need it. I think we can be more efficient without it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to make eye contact with everybody, but I may fail. So all it is an event.
Do I need to pass out on this either?
Do you want everyone down, or do you guys just?
Let's get one of the sheriff into the fire marshal, the emergency management coordinator, so. If you have enough extras.
Yes.
Yeah, we can leave some too when we take off. What's a good amount of time for us to spend? 20 minutes, max, less? We'll keep it as brief as possible.
Did you get the patch?
Thanks.
So sorry. Sharing? Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Julie. Appreciate that. All right, can I get started?
Please.
Yeah, so just to read our, who we are. Company's name is Tanaska. Project name is Piney Woods CCS hub. That stands for Piney Woods Carbon Capture and Sequestration. Many of you know that because you've heard me speak before. I'm Jesse Frumman. I'm the director of development for this project. Which means I'm in charge. I'm here to make it go well. I'm also here to take questions. Really interesting, the gentleman before me was as if we coordinated, because he used my favorite word, transparency. That's why we came before the court before. We'll do it again in the future. We'll hold community meetings. We have an office just around the corner. I really only have three goals today. One is to give an update on what's been going well in the project over the past year. Two, tell you what's coming next, so the community and the court knows what to expect. And three, give some of the results, not all of them, but some from the economic development study that we do for all our projects that talks about the economic developments, jobs, taxes, et cetera. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Probably do questions at the end, if you'd like. Okay, yeah. Someone has a burning question, get ahold of me. I'm happy to answer them, but maybe we hold questions till the end. Either way, it's fine with me. So I'll just do a brief, what is carbon capture? I think the court knows, but some of the people in the audience may not know. You also mentioned before, the gentleman before me mentioned Eric Waller. So what does carbon capture do? It takes carbon dioxide out of the air. It leads to cleaner air and it stores it back underground where it originally started. That's the idea of carbon capture. And the way we do that is there's industrial companies in the general area. It could be a chemical plant, manufacturing facility, a natural gas plant, paper company. Anybody that has a stack will have carbon dioxide and other chemicals coming out of that stack. We capture that, we put it into a pipeline, and we put it back underground, which is where the carbon dioxide began. So that's carbon capture in a nutshell. There's a lot of information about it all over the web, but especially on our website. I encourage people to check that out if you want more details about how we do it, how we ensure safety, compliance with all the laws, et cetera. It's all there on the website. Okay, so what's happened since we were here last time? Couple of big events. One, we've completed most of the leasing for the project land. And that's a good thing, right? That means we've gone out into the community and we've gotten acceptance and buy-in from those folks in the project footprint. Right now, it's probably around 50 to 60 families. Maybe we have five or six more to go in that range. But by and large, we've done a lot of leasing for the project. So that's a good thing, right? We came out with an offer, we negotiated with people, we met a lot of nice local attorneys, worked through the deals with them, and got people in the community to say yes. So that was a big event for us. We're not done, but we're close. Two, we were able to submit our permit for the project. And that goes really to three entities. It goes to EPA, the federal government, goes to the Railroad Commission, which we all know, and it goes to TCEQ. And we have to get approved by all three of those entities before we can do any construction in the community. We've had a lot of back and forth with all three of those. Things seem to be moving in the right direction. We don't have any permits or approvals yet, but I think we're on track for approvals by the end of this year. So those are really the big things that have happened in the project. There's a lot of details. We've been working with potential customers. We've been working on the potential pipeline route. Everything you need to get the project in shape to be financed and built, that's all a process. But the land and moving towards the permit are the biggest issues. So that's where we've been. Where are we headed? What comes next? What can we expect in the community over the next year? Let me tell you one thing for sure, there won't be any construction this year. We expect construction at the soonest to be sometime middle to end of next year, provided we get those permits at the end of this year. So in terms of anything happening on the ground that anyone in the community could see or worry about, that wouldn't happen till the earliest middle, probably end of next year. So what happens between now and then? We try to get a permit. That's a lot of the back and forth with the governments. We finish up the land leasing. And we get a customer to commit that carbon dioxide so that we can store it underground. So that's the what comes next. And of course, like we always do, between now and then, we've got our office, we'll do some community meetings. We'll be back to visit the court, not only here, but in Hardin County, Jefferson County, probably Harris County, where the pipeline will originate. So a lot of community outreach, Julia's team, Pierre Font, they're our local group, community relations, public relations, always available locally to talk to people for any questions. So let me pause there for a minute. It might have been a big word salad. Anybody have any questions about what I brought up? Or services about carbon in general?
It's 100,000 acres that you're leasing?
The way I think about it, so we call it the plume of the project, where the carbon dioxide spreads underground. That's approximately 20,000 acres. And it won't start out that big, of course, right? When you first inject carbon, you're gonna cover 10 acres, 50 acres, 100 acres. The maximum extent of the plume over the 30-year life cycle of the project is 20,000 acres. That's what we submit to the EPA. That's what we submit to Railroad Commission. So when they look at our permit and our geologic modeling that says where the carbon's gonna go and how it spreads over time, that's the maximum extent that we can have it spread. In reality, it's probably going to be less. And it starts small and then grows as we expect it over time.
So do you make money selling the credit, the carbon credit? Or do you make money storing the, or both?
It's a good question. It's sort of yes and yes. Our company, who builds the sequestration field, we get paid by the emitter to store the carbon. So we call ourselves a storage and sequestration company. We'll do the pipeline, which transports it, and we'll build the sequestration, which is really just injection wells. And we get paid on a per-ton basis by the emitter. So let's take it for example. There's a natural gas plant. It's producing electricity for Texas. But as part of the production of natural gas, there's carbon dioxide. They have come to Tanaska and said, hey, for whatever reason, economics, wanting to appear environmentally friendly, whatever the reason is, they come to Tanaska, we want you to store the carbon. And they'll pay us on a per-ton basis to do that. Now, the credit you're referencing, that's a very important part of the whole ecosystem. But that credit, what they call the 45Q, that actually goes to the company that's producing the carbon as an incentive for them to get involved in this whole process. So yes, like in a downstream way, we benefit from it because if they didn't get it, maybe they would do less or they would delay it to the future. So the company that produces carbon, they get the credit. They use some of that revenue to build their facilities because they have to capture it at their smokestack and then some of it to pay Tanaska to do the storage. That make sense? So it's yes and yes.
The surface acres that are included in this, what happens there?
Yeah.
Should anyone want to build on the surface acreage?
Yeah, so in the entire 20,000 acres of the project, we roughly use about 10 acres on the surface. It's a very small footprint. As you can imagine, we're just building wells. And there's four injection wells and around eight to 10 monitoring wells that monitor where the carbon goes. So one thing that I like to say, and I think it's really true. So, one thing that I like to say, and I think it's really true, like bang for your buck for a community or for the landowners, it's a really good deal. Why? Because ninety-nine percent of the action is ten thousand feet below ground, all the landowners in the project still get to use their land for recreation, hunting, whatever it is that they wanna do, right? So we're only talking ten acres in a project footprint of twenty thousand acres that would be disturbed on the surface. So also, from a community standpoint, it's not a big manufacturing facility, it doesn't take a lot of roads and upkeep. Truth of the matter is, like, well, if you all know where that project area is, you know, we call it Piney Woods for a reason, it's trees and swamps and, we never came in here and built those four eight wells, probably nobody would ever know. We don't do that because of transparency, but like, it's just a really good bang for the buck for the community, right?
Does it have any negative impact on the property values thereafter? If you're in that twenty thousand acre?
I mean, that's a good question, right? We could talk through it, I don't know how this plays out in the future. I've done a lot of real estate in my life, though, and I would think, if I'm a property owner, and now I have an income stream on my property, I can now sell it like any property has an income-producing asset. So before, maybe I sold timber, or I sold hunting leases, right? And my land's worth twenty-five hundred, but with a lease on it, maybe I can get three thousand an acre. Now you've got Tenaska paying you a pretty juicy royalty, so I would think logically, the land's worth more. I can tell you for sure, since I started leasing lands three years ago, and today, as people heard about it, the price to me has gone up. So at least in that timeframe, the land's gotten more valuable. Now, what does that do over thirty years? I don't have a break in circling that.
You use the word plume, and to me, I think of atomic plumes.
Yeah.
That's a negative.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair, well, I mean, let's address that, right? So people hear carbon dioxide, and hear plume, and they hear pipeline, and it sounds scary, I understand that. But let's like take a step back, a giant step back. What is carbon dioxide, and is it dangerous? And the answer is, well, no, right? It's innate gas, it's not flammable. If you would compare the magnitude of possible problems from natural gas, which there's natural gas pipelines and gas plants all over Texas, right? A gas that is flammable and explosive, to carbon dioxide, which is neither of those things. And by the way, not to be cheeky, but what do we think it is in Diet Coke or sparkling water? It's carbon dioxide, we literally put it into our beverages and purposely ingest it. So, does that make it definitively not harmful under any circumstance? No, but just think about it a little bit logically, like what sort of gas is carbon dioxide compared to natural gas? So to your point about a plume, yeah, I wouldn't want a natural gas plant to explode, right? That would be bad. All the carbon, NOx, SOx, all the other things, flames, carbon dioxide cannot do that. So, the magnitude of even a potential worst-case scenario is much, much smaller than all the other industry, and, you know, chemical plants and gas that exist in Texas. Now, look, that's not to say you could never, ever have a problem. I'm a realist, this is a major industrial project, costs several hundred million dollars, we have to do construction. There's always some risk, but I would submit to everybody two things. One, Tenaska is an amazing company, and you can check our track record on construction safety. We won awards all over the country for the safety of our plants and operations, so we know what we're doing. We're also a small privately-held company, family-owned, so we care about what we're doing and we care about the communities. That's not to say that a bigger public company, I won't mention any names, like, they might behave differently, but we are a family-owned privately-held company, and interacting well in the communities really matters to us. So, I would never tell the court there can't be a problem, there always could be an accident, but, A, we try to prepare for that.
So you have a risk consequence matrix that you can look at and tell what the community would, they would be faced with?
You've used our favorite, well, one of our favorite words, we got transparency as one, and risk matrix as two. And the answer is yes, yeah, I mean, we have a development one, we have a construction law, and our engineering team as one. And by the way, as part of our submittal to the Railroad Commission and EPA, we have to put our money where our mouth is, and you have to post the appropriate financial security and insurance and bonds before we ever move one shovel of dirt. So if there was a problem, the financial assurance is already there ahead of times to account for it.
Good.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, hit me.
How pure is your CO2 that you're gonna be transporting through the pipeline?
Ah, I knew that spec was gonna, we have a spec for it. You know, it's ninety-nine point something, something, I don't remember the exact number, but it, it, it's in the high nineties in terms of the CO2 purity.
And how large is the pipeline you're wanting to put underground after you're transporting it?
Yeah, so generally, there's two parts to the pipeline, there's what we call the trunk line, that's what covers the most distance, and then there's a smaller portion, the arterial, that goes to the customers. The trunk line is probably in the sixteen-inch range, and the arterial is probably in the twelve-inch range.
The pressure they transport it?
Fifteen hundred-ish, it, it changes, right? Because you put it in at one pressure, and what makes it move is a lower pressure at the other end. So, so let's, let's call it fifteen hundred-ish, I can get you the exact number.
Then maybe I'll have any incidents of a rupture on the pipeline?
We have not, we're gonna try to keep it that way.
Hey, Jenny, anything?
Uh, just have one question.
Yeah.
As far as underground, uh, storage, uh, what does the pressure build up?
Yeah, so the question was, what does the pressure build up un- underground? So, um, the way it works is, before we ever get started, we spend a year to eighteen months doing seismic review, right? And they build what's called a static and dynamic model of what happens to the CO2 over time. The most important part, what makes for a good sequestration project, we call it the two Ps, porosity and permeability, right? So you have to have rock that has little holes in it for the CO2 to go anywhere, right? We expect it to spread over time. The third most important part of that is having a solid cap rock, right? How do we make sure the CO2 stays in the area that we said it would stay, and not get into water or come back up to the surface, for example? That means you have to have a solid cap rock. So porosity, the permeability, and cap rock are all what lead to safe geologic storage. What pressure is it down there? I'm sorry, I don't know that exact number, but the bigger picture is that, before we get to do any of the construction, three separate government entities have reviewed all, all math and engineering to say that those three elements exist, and the pressure, whatever number that might be, I'm sorry, I don't know, is the correct pressure for safe operations.
Surely you would have to size compressors that, that, what it'll take to get it down there, right?
That's correct, yeah, I haven't seen our detailed engineering, but yes, I hear our engineers debating which compressors to use endlessly. Yeah.
Alrighty.
See, I guess there's two more minutes, okay?
Sure.
Yeah, so we did, the, the third piece I wanted to talk about today was just the economic development study that we did. We do that for all of our projects, and the idea is to get really granular on what sort of benefits accrue to the community. So those of you that have a presentation, I think it's page twelve and thirteen, has a lot of numbers there, and in fact, the study's about a hundred pages. If anybody, if anybody on the court wants to read the whole thing and really do a deep dive, Julia can, can get it to you all. I guess I'll just draw attention to a couple of numbers, the pages are filled with numbers, but, um, you know, the local benefits, the local, I think, tax benefits is approaching three hundred million, I think it says two hundred and seventy-nine million on the document. And then jobs, which is what everyone cares about, it's approaching ten thousand job years. Job years is a weird metric, right? How many, how many people and jobs over the life of the project? It translates to about three hundred jobs. So, in addition to all the money we pay to the fifty or sixty landowners in the project, in addition to the money we pay for all the easements for the right-of-way, in addition to all the equipment, et cetera, et cetera, we've also got that roughly three hundred million to local communities, and approximately three hundred jobs. So, bottom line, it, it's an economic benefit to the community, but without the burdens of a huge impact on the surface operations of the land, or the services of the community. So with that, that's my summary, take more questions?
Yes, as this progresses, when do you plan on having meetings with the general public? Just as.
Mr. Myers was concerned about on the last project.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things. We've got available office hours, and we've actually had people come in to ask questions on an ad hoc basis. Currently, the Railroad Commission, in coordination with the EPA, is planning a public outreach meeting. We're told that that was gonna occur in the spring, and we are expected to participate in that. So I think the first meeting, like a public meeting where there's some sort of notice that you'll see, will actually be originated by them, because they wanna talk about the permit we submit, how they're reviewing it, how they're making sure it's safe, complying with the law, et cetera. So to answer your question, I think we'll see it in late spring. Anything involving the government right now is a little bit in flux, so that may move, but my expectation, and what I've told my team is, be prepared to participate in this meeting in late spring. Depending on how that goes, if we need to do a separate one, we follow up with our. Thank you.
So this is just EPA regulatory edict, and you guys providing the facility to, to support the industry that produces the CO2, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair way to put it, I mean, we've.
You're not making anything.
You mean like producing a new product?
You don't have product.
No, the, the way I think about it is just sort of an assistance and accelerator to industry, right? The more industry that there occurs here and elsewhere, the more smokestacks you have and stuff going in the air. Those customers have been coming to us for years, hey, help us find a solution. It's certainly helped when some of the credits got larger, there's no way of avoiding that, but CO2 capture's been an available technology for years, and some companies have been doing it. Are more companies doing it now with the, you know, increased credit? Yeah, that's true. But one thing, and I say this to all my landowners, like, um, it's sort of a, a so what? Like, nobody's any worse off. We capture, we do a carbon capture plan, and we capture carbon, the air is cleaner, some people are getting paid. If we don't get to do the project, it's gonna be improved, the landowners have gotten paid some auction money. Nobody's any worse off, right? I think we can all be a lot better off, but very few people, if anyone, can be any worse off.
Where's it going now, if you're not tempering it?
Yeah, it evaporates, goes, goes into the air and disperses in the air, right? Again, just any smokestack you see anywhere, right? There's nothing unique about the smokestacks we're targeting, except maybe they have a higher percentage of carbon as compared to, say, NOx or SOx, right? Not every emission can be captured, and very few can be captured at all cost-effectively. So yeah, everything just dissipates into the, into the air.
I remember from junior high and high school science, trees turn CO2 into oxygen.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that'd be another good solution, the more trees, the, I'm pro tree. The more trees, the better, right? Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, that's the natural way the planet has done it for thousands, thousands of years. Over time, with more development, fewer trees, you can now think of this as a, as a replacement for some of those trees. Yeah.
Alright. Big suitcase with no handles.
Big, big suitcase with no handle, you mean the storage facility?
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
You can store it there, but you can't haul it anyplace.
And you don't wanna store it anyplace, you want it stored where it's safe and appropriate.
Right.
Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Appreciate you being here, thank you. Alrighty.
I do.
And for transparency's sake, I would all ask that.
Make a motion, take no action.
Thank you. Motion for Bruce, take no action. Second for Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. And thank y'all for coming today, appreciate you. Yeah. Item number eight-two is from Mr. Brown over in the Tax Assessor Collector's Office. Considered approved, grant payment per agreement with Liberty Capstone Properties LLC, Liberty County, Texas, in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Good morning, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Brown. We are just certifying that we verified that all the conditions have been met between the agreement with the county in Capstone, and there should have been a packet with all the verifications.
Okay. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce, second for Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
I think I have one more.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, this consider, number three is considered approved, overpay refunds to the following accounts. CoreLogic Tax Service, account number one-two-eight-seven-five-four, in the amount of thirty-five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Edith Yasmin Ortiz, account number two-one-nine-eight-nine-seven, the amount of thirty-five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. And Dorothy Hiawski Estate, account number three-one-six-six-five, in the amount of four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Um, these are just your standard overpayments that the court has to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion for Greg. Second for Bruce, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number four-eight-four from Mr. Dennis over in IT. Considered approved, copier for IT department being added to the county master contract with platinum copiers at a hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce. Second for Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-five from Ms. Chambers' office, county clerk. Discuss and approve the county clerk computer replacement plan to update all records management workstations in the county clerk office in twenty-twenty-five for a total of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents to be out of the county clerk records management fund. And I guess I'll ask Dwayne, she have enough money in that account to cover that? Yeah, I would say she does, in fact, you look at the balance.
I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any questions, I think it's necessary update.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce. Second for Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-six from Ms. Chambers. Discuss and approve the polling locations for the May third, twenty-twenty-five city and school election, with submitted precinct consolidations and the notice of election. Now, Lee, we had this discussion at our election board meeting Friday, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Information that you discussed there, and forward this over to the commissioners for their consideration of approval, correct?
Yes, it's really more for information than anything, but as we're the contractor for these elections, I want, and the county, excuse me, as the contractor for the elections, under my office, I wanted you to see and know where the locations would be. It's a little bit unusual, because we don't have enough activity in the Harden area, so we will not be opening the usual Harden, uh, early voting location. They will be at Cleveland, uh, Cleveland Civic Center, Santa Fe Admin, Dayton Community Center, and Jack Cartel for this city and school election. There are only eight, possibly nine entities involved, and they're, they're focused towards those other locations.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright. Motion for Bruce. Second for Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. And number eight-seven from Ms. Chambers, discuss and approve a resolution opposing the elimination of. the elimination of the countywide polling place program, electronic poll books and electronic marking devices as proposed by the Texas Legislature. Boy, I mean to tell you, yeah. Got a motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up, eight eight, from Mr. C over in purchasing. Consider and approve the extension of contract for additional road materials. That's SS1 and CRS2 through RFP 2405 through March 25th, 2026, with Cleveland Asphalt Products Incorporated. And this is exercising the first of three renewal options and if applicable, execute the addendum. Catherine, here, see anything in there that's out of order?
Yes, sir. Everything's-
What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg.
Can't do no roads without no SS1.
It'd be a wish road, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight nine, from Mr. C. Consider and approve payment of invoice number H019967 from Rava Chris Kissner in the amount of $1,184.50 for construction materials testing services on RFP number 24-14 for the Northwest Annex Project. And this is just the costs that's incurred in the construction process.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight ten, from Mr. C. Consider and approve payment application number seven from White Construction in the amount of $529,621.72 for the construction manager at risk services, RFP number 23-20 for the Northwest Annex Project. And this is just what we're opening them up to current date?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight eleven, from Mr. C. Consider and approve the extension of contracts for autopsy transports and proper cremations. That's RFP number 2307 through April 30th, 2025, with various funeral homes. And if applicable, execute the addendum. And Catherine, you didn't see a problem with this one at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't either, so, but, I mean, need to have it. Got a motion. Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twelve, from Ms. Soliday over in permits and inspections. Consider and approve amendment number six to the GLO contract number 20-066-013-C095 for extension of time to complete the buyouts. This extension does not have any extra money attached. It is for an extension of time to complete the buyout program only. Come on up, please.
And this is the subdivision out in Commissioner Archer's area?
New River.
New River?
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Yes. This is just the, like it says, the extension of time to complete the buyout program. The amendment is attached with it. But we just need a little bit more time, I guess.
Second.
No extra money attached to it?
No.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg. Second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight thirteen, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the replat of Reserve P, Santa Fe Section 1, AutoZone number 5777. LJA's engineering letter recommendation for approval is attached in the packet. So this is to put an AutoZone-
Yes.
-parts house there.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Sorry.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. It's a little economic development moving right along. Okay, number eight fourteen, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve payments to Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated in the amount of $179,640 using ARPA funds for the Ames sanitary sewer improvement for the following invoices. And I'll read the invoice number 12901.0013, $35,850. Invoice number 12901.0014 for $65,500. Invoice number 12901.00 for $59,900. Invoice number 12901.00-16 for $7,500. And invoice number 12901.0017 for $4,950. Invoice 12901.00-18 for $5,940. And that adding all together being a total of $179,640. Each, a copy of each invoice with mayor domain signature of approval is attached for your, your review. Are there any questions, concerns?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fifteen. Consider and approve payments to LJA Engineering in the amount of $17,996.93 using ARPA funds for the following invoices. Invoice number 202436059 for $4,000. Invoice number 202439891 for $9,745.68. Invoice number 202446190 for $4,251.25. Total of $17,996.93. A copy of the Harden council members. It's attached in the packet showing that the council approval and their payments with signatures, no doubt. Okay. What say the court? Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Why is it on the Ames? We just have a mayor's signature instead of the city council on Harden? We have the whole city council. Does he have the authority to sign up on this?
Catherine?
Probably not. It would take approval from the entire city council, just, just like y'all do here in Commissioners Court, right? I don't know that that hasn't happened in this case. There isn't enough information provided to make that determination. But both Ames and the city of Harden should have had a meeting, just like we're doing here today, and approved it in front of their council. Now, the mayor may have authority as the agent to sign, but it would take a meeting of that council to approve it.
I, I do believe Melinda said they did have a meeting and it's on a video of them approving it. So I don't know. We need to look into that.
Would that be sufficient there, Catherine? I mean, they did have it, the council meeting with the approval by the council.
Yeah, yes. If they met and approved it, I cannot confirm that. I've not seen anything. I've not seen Agenda Minutes. I've not watched the video. I certainly trust the permitting department, but-
Well, I, I wouldn't have mentioned anything about it until I seen the two different. These are the same projects, the ARPA funds we have given to them. And I always see that Harden gets their city council, which I feel should be a part of this. And Ames, I just always see the mayor's on there without city councils. So I was just-
Perhaps we could make that a requirement in the future.
Yeah.
But for the expediency of payment, I think we probably have enough at the moment.
Sure, we're just approving our, our part of it.
Okay. So maybe Catherine, you might want to give them a call in.
Sure, absolutely. And if you can have Melinda reach out as well. Alright, thank you.
Alright. So we have a motion by Greg, second by Bruce, to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight sixteen, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Colley Ridge Development LLC request to approve Santa Fe Section 17 into the two-year maintenance program. LJA Engineering Maintenance Inspection Report is attached in the packet. LJA recommends that the roads be accepted into the two-year maintenance program.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Question on this. I've got a very similar thing happening in the Oaks of Trinity, one of the sections. And I haven't been able to see the approval letter from LJA. And so I've been asked to include this on the agenda, but until I had something documented, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to move forward to it because we also know that, that roads need some attention. So when I looked at this one and I see that there are some exceptions taken by LJA, I wonder why we would put something into the two-year maintenance plan that doesn't meet the specification as, as we have it written and approved before you accept it into it? Because in my mind, you know, they could wait until they, we do the final acceptance, put the, make the changes and then we would potentially have some repairs that would be a result of that. So I, I, my question is, why, why isn't all the, why aren't all the standards met before we go to the two-year period before, before it's accepted? That's, that's the only, that's the only thing that-
I think you have a good point. And I think that we need to get with our permitting department and LJA and have them explain or send a letter with these of their procedure, of their inspections, what they've come up with.
I mean, it's very detailed.
But it's going to have to be in a change in the rules and regulations-
Okay.
-of the, on which we're working on right now.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not taking any exception to this one, but I, this general, general question is, you know, why, why do we do this? It seems premature in my mind.
Alright.
She said we need to do a rules change to, to accommodate that. Is that right, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay.